I'll give you a cue. A court ordered the April 12th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening. First item of business, item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Understand a motion?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move right to item 2.1, student recognition, and welcome Mr. Galvin.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, School Board, for having us tonight. I'm Jim Galvin, Activities Director at Moundsview High School. We've got a great bunch of students here tonight from both Moundsview and Irondale High School. Tonight, we've got our dance team represented, econ club, math team, and our co-op gymnastics team. And then Mr. Finkel introduce his kids. It's been a great winter for us. We went through the winter without very many COVID interruptions, and it was just great to have kids, parents, families, and all the kids' peers back in the auditoriums, the gyms, the rinks, to support one another. So we're looking to go to a great spring, and it was a wonderful winter. Here's our dance team.
All right.
Hi, I'm Morgan Noel, and I'm a senior, and I'm also a captain for the Vuetz Dance Team.
Hi, I'm Abby Roess. I'm also a senior and a captain of the Moundsview Dance Team.
I'm Arianna Stamper, and I'm a senior and captain of the Moundsview Dance Team.
I'm Quinn, and I'm a senior, and I'm also a captain.
Hi, my name is Ashley. I'm a senior and also a captain for the Moundsview Dance Team. One of the highlights of our season was making it to state in both kick and jazz this year. This year, we placed third in our section for jazz, and then we won a high kick section.
Very cool.
Hello, I'm Lyndon Lee, and I'm a junior captain of the Moundsview Math Team. This, I've been on the Moundsview Math Team for three years now, and this year, Moundsview did really well, placing third in the state and second at the state tournament. I scored first place all-around individual at the state tournament as well. Aside from the high school math league, Moundsview also participates in competitions such as the Mankato Math Contest and the AMC Competition Series. I'd just like to thank my math teacher, Ms. Higginbotham, as well as my dean, Ms. Elmquist, Principal Bruggers, and the rest of the School Board.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia, and I'm a senior from Moundsview High School, and I am also part of the math team. So I've been part of Moundsview Math Team since ninth grade, and this year, it was great to be able to compete in person again. And like Lyndon said, we got to play second at state this year, and I also ranked 22 individual in the state along with the other seven members of our team, which was really great.
Hello, my name is Fiona, and I'm an eighth grader at Chippewa Middle School. I'm so grateful that Mrs. Higginbotham has allowed my classmates and I to join the Moundsview Math Team. I had a great time, and I look forward to math team next year.
Hello again. I, once again, Lyndon Lee, Junior, Moundsview High School. Aside from the math team, I am also part of the econ team, which also had a great season. We sent two teams to the Harvard Economics Tournament, both tied for third place, and our captain, Cameron Dalvow, finished first place overall. We also sent a team to Northwestern for a competition. We placed second in the power round and third, third place at the Quiz Bowl. Moundsview also has sent two teams to the National Econ Challenge Series. We're waiting our results of the regionals. Also, we, we sent two teams to the Euro Challenge. We're also waiting on results, and if we do well enough, we might send a team to New York City. Yeah, for econ club, I'd like to thank my teachers, Ms. Russian, Mr. Osland, as well as the captain Cameron, for making everything possible.
Hi, my name is Avery. I'm a sophomore at Moundsview. I'm on the gymnastics team. This team has really helped me find my love for gymnastics again. I've built a lot of amazing friendships and learned a lot of leadership skills as well. And then, of course, second in the state on floor is a bonus.
Hello, I'm Julia Clark. I'm a senior at Irondale, and I'm a captain of the gymnastics team. This year, we really took off as a team. We broke our school record, which Fink still owes us windbreakers for. And we also placed second at section, so we were runners-up to go to state. We had four people qualify for the state tournament, and then I myself qualified for all-around, and I placed fourth all-around at the state tournament.
Mr., thank you when you hear about this windbreaker scandal.
Well, kids need to read the fine print. That's all I have. I'm Chris Fink. I'm the Activities Director at Irondale High School. It's been an extremely busy winter. We still have some programs that just finished and others that are soon to be finished with our winter program. Our robotics team, just, I think they came back from Houston, Texas. Our winter color guard just returned back from Dayton, Ohio. So as you can see, our kids are traveling all over the place doing all of these activities, and it's a benefit for, you know, the kids get this experience once in their lifetime, and it happens to be in high school. So we love the support that we get from the community and the school, School Board, and our superintendent, just to help support all these programs. We have three awesome student leaders that are going to talk about their activities. So here they are.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Madeline Apotkowski, and I'm here with the Irondale Winter Drumline. The Winter Drumline consists of 37 members representing both Irondale and Moundsview. Our show this year is called "All That Remains." It's about memories and how they endure through our entire lives. We had a very successful season, and we placed second at world, at state championships last weekend. Next week, we'll be traveling to Dayton, Ohio, to compete in world championships with 47 other groups. We will be hosting a free send-off show this Saturday at 7:30 in the Irondale Varsity Gym. If you'd like to see our show, this is the last time we will perform in Minnesota, so please stop by. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sailor, and I represent Irondale Girls Basketball. One of the highlights of our season was our Box Out Cancer Game, because we were able to raise $1,200 for ovarian cancer. And with girls basketball at Irondale, we do a lot with our youth, because that's how we build our program, and I love being a part of Irondale Girls Basketball.
Hi, I'm Dane Dido Menace. I'm on the varsity team for Irondale, and this year, we won 15 games, 14 more than last year. Last year, we only won one game, so.
What sport?
Basketball. Basketball. And that was a big part. We got a new coach, Trent Davis. That kind of changed our whole perspective and inspiration for what we really wanted to do. It kind of gave us more motivation, and the chemistry kind of just built with us, and he's given us more opportunities as we learn. And me personally, I was an all-conference honorable mention, so it was just fun to be a part of it this year and hope to keep playing next year.
I know we have a number of seniors in the mix. If you have plans for next year, and you're comfortable sharing, we'd love to hear where you're off to.
My name's Ashley, and I plan on going to the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and I'm trying out for their dance team.
All right.
I'm Quinn, and I'm going to Louisiana State University.
I'm Arianna, and I'm also going to University of Wisconsin-Madison.
I'm Abby, and I'm going to the University of Minnesota.
I'm Morgan, and I'm going to Syracuse University, and I also plan to try out for the dance team.
We're losing the whole dance team.
I'm Cynthia, and I plan on studying bioengineering at the University of Pennsylvania.
I'm Lyndon, and although I'm a junior, I applied to college early and got into Yale, where I plan to apply, I plan to major in applied math.
I'm Julia, and I'm planning on attending Iowa State.
I'm Maddie, and I'm planning on University of North Dakota for aviation.
I'm a junior.
Thank you for, thank you for joining us this evening, sharing your accomplishments. As a board, incredibly impressed with the work that you do, the way that you represent our district. And it's fun to see such an array of different activities being represented here, so congratulations to all of you. I won't suggest that you stay for the rest of the board meeting. Go do whatever it is that you do, and we're going to hang out here and continue to do our work, but, but thanks to all of you for being here and for the work that you do. I'm going to move us to item 2.3, announcements, and Shauna's going to acknowledge the gifts.
Yeah, I was just impressed with the, I'm a junior and I got into Yale. That was amazing. All right, so we had four gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $2,700, and we had 15 gifts received for the Ralph Ritter Food Shelf this period for a total of $11,979. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, thank you. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting dates, April 26, 7:00 p.m. a regular meeting of the board, and May 5, 5:00 p.m. a work session of the board, both here at the District Center. I'll move us to item 2.4. I will not forget the superintendent this evening, so we'll let you give us a report.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chair Weinhegen. I do have several things this evening. First, recent data coming up, but over the last couple of years, I think a narrative has started around academics, rigor, and student learning loss. And while I'll be the first to admit that both teaching and learning were incredibly disruptive during that period, the data we received back recently clearly demonstrates that our students continue to perform exceptionally well. And the latest example I'm talking about is the recently released state graduation rates that came out by school district. Once again, in Moundsview Public Schools, our graduation rate significantly surpassed the, the state average during that. And for the class of 2021, arguably, they were the most affected through the, through the pandemic and saw the brunt of the educational disruption. But our students graduated at a rate of 92.2%, and that is compared to the state average of 83.3%. So I know that there's a lot of factors that go into making that a reality, and I just wanted to thank everybody involved, all of our employees, certainly our teachers, paras, but across all employee groups, what we've done to, to create conditions. You saw some of the student recognition tonight for, for our kids to be able to succeed and graduate at that kind of rate. So very clear that our kids continue to receive educational, excellent educational experience here in the Moundsview Schools. Another highlight that I wanted to make sure we, we at least mentioned this evening, as we're coming back and having people kind of return here, is the registrations we're seeing for our summer programming. So did you know that in the first week alone for our registration for community education programs this summer, communities saw over 2,000 registrations? Now, that is more than the total number of registrations for the summer of 2021. So within a week, we already surpassed that. Very excited that people are finding our programs interesting, viable, and are signing up. That said, if you are interested and you're watching this, I would highly recommend that you get out, get on our website and, and take a look at that and get registered, because seats are going fast for our summer programming. I also wanted to mention, and the board, you're going to, yep, once again, 10th consecutive year, Moundsview Public Schools has won the award for Best Communities in Music Education. As you know, we're very, very proud of our music program in the district. This award is presented annually by the National Association of Music Merchants, and Moundsview this year was one of only seven school districts to receive this award. Overall, if you think about our music program, we have more than 3,000 students, grades four through 12, who participate in our band, choir, and orchestra programs. And again, congratulations to everyone associated with that program, especially our, our music educators. I also wanted to share an exciting event that took place just yesterday at Edgewood Middle School. Some of you might have even seen this on the news. Channel 11, I believe, came and covered. Edgewood and Irondale High School students teamed up to raise money for Minnesota Special Olympics by participating in a polar plunge. So they brought in actually a portable tank into the Edgewood parking lot, and about 80 students and staff took the plunge yesterday. Better day yesterday than today, but cold nonetheless for those students and staff. And all the participants raised more than $10,000, and a portion of those proceeds do come back directly to assist our students and programs in, in Moundsview. And finally, I want to highlight a very unique and exciting event that's scheduled for Saturday, April 23, and that is the date of our American Indian students, families, and staff will be hosting their fourth annual powwow. That celebrates American Indian students, education, and tradition. So this is a free event for anyone interested in attending. It's going to be held at Highview Middle School. The event begins at noon with the grand entry taking place at 1:00. So if you can get there to see the grand entry, I'd highly recommend that. For more information, if you're looking for that, you can contact Jill Spencer or visit our district website. And with that, I'll end my report.
Thank you. Item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. Understand a motion?
So moved. Second?
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move to item 4.1, non-renewal of contracts. Tough act to follow, student recognition, the superintendent's great news. This is the fun stuff. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you. Good evening. So tonight, we're bringing forward the probationary teacher non-renewals. As you know, Minnesota statute outlines the probationary period, period for teachers, and during this probationary period, the teaching contract may be not renewed for any reason, including performance, budgetary, and staffing reasons. Teachers who are hired to one-year positions, as well as licensure reasons. So a probationary teacher is deemed to have been re-employed for the following school year unless we give written notice by July 1. So we're taking action now in order to meet that timeline, as well as to give teachers sufficient opportunity to pursue employment options elsewhere. All teachers recommended for non-renewal this year were notified by their principal prior to tonight's meeting, and so tonight, we're asking the board for approval of the non-renewal of our probationary teachers.
Any questions for Julie? I would undertake a motion to adopt Attachment A.
So moved.
Second? Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll move on to non-renewal of varsity head coach.
So Minnesota statute also outlines the process necessary for the non-renewal of a head varsity coach, which requires that the board take action on that non-renewal. And so tonight, we're asking the board for approval of the non-renewal of a head varsity coach.
Any questions?
I, I do have a question.
Great.
I don't recall seeing this before when we've had other situations such as this. Can you just help me understand why this is being pulled out as a separate item?
So statute requires it. I can't speak to kind of action that might have happened prior to my coming here, but in this particular case, we were notified of the non-renewal, and we're just taking the action required by statute.
Got it. Okay.
Any other questions? I would undertake a motion to terminate pursuant to the attached resolution.
So moved.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move to item 5.1, policy review, 2100 series, and I think this is a second reading.
It is. Yes, in fact, it is, Chair Weinhegen. Tonight, we have two policy series that we're actually going to talk about, but the first is the 2100 series. We are back for a second reading with those policies. As you are aware, there are five policies in this group. As board members, you've had the opportunity to review them all most recently. The first reading was held at the School Board meeting on March 8. As a reminder, there is only one recommendation for revision to these policies, which was simply a language change, and that language was moving from all students, the language also to each student. That change in wording is in alignment with the other board governance policies. Other than that, we received no additional feedback for review or revision, so tonight, administration is recommending the board approve that language change to policy BG 2100 and mark the balance of the 21 policy series as reviewed as of today's day.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd undertake a motion to adopt policy EG 2100 as revised?
So moved. Second?
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item 5.2, policy review, 3100 series for a first reading.
Correct. So the second group of policies you're looking at are the 3100 series. There are 16 total policies within this group. Tonight, we're bringing these for the first reading, and there was only one recommendation for revision, and that was policy BG 3115. This policy, there's really two parts to it. In this policy, we are again recommending the language change from all students to each student, so that would be updated, and you've seen that. In addition, we are recommending that policy BG 3115 add language and set the expectation for clear procedures to be in place to ensure students have access to the technology needed when engaging in this, in the instruction that we provide. Obviously, that's something we watched happen through the pandemic, and while the procedures are really where we need to update, we want to make sure that the policy references that the procedure will include that information. So it's really a clarification policy, that that will be included in the regulation as we move forward. So as I said, clearly, the last two years has demonstrated that need, especially for equitable access to technology, tools, software, and internet for our students. So that has been added to the policy. Again, this is a first reading, so happy to take any comments or feedback you have tonight. Otherwise, between now and our next meeting on April 26, if you have any feedback, please get that to us. We'll incorporate that and update it to bring it back for a second reading at the April 26 meeting.
Any immediate questions or feedback from the board? Great, thank you, and thank you for the work on that.
You bet.
I'm going to move us right along to item 6.1, Northeast Metro 916 Partnership Overview. We welcome some guests, and while I do that, I may pass it over to Board Member Westerman really quickly, who represents us on the 916 Board graciously to offer a few opening remarks.
Yes. So as you all know, we are a member of 916 Intermediate District. I took over as a board member. We have a, an assignment on that board. We get a seat on that board as a member. I took over that role for us in January of this year, coming after many, I don't know, 20-plus years of Mary Jo Sager serving on the board. So I've been spending the last three months getting to, to know all about 916, doing, I don't even know all. I, I've learned a little. I've got a lot more to learn, but I've, I've had the opportunity to understand a little more about how the intermediate district serves us and our role in that, and I had asked that we have a presentation as a board, a kind of an overview of 916, because I know as a board member, I didn't, I went for a long time without really knowing much about 916. So I just thought it was a good time with Superintendent New to 916 as well. It's just like she, she took over the lead role, although having been there for many years in leadership, she took over the superintendent role recently, so it's kind of good timing to invite her here for a presentation and an overview. So with that, those are my opening comments, and I'd, I'd welcome you to go ahead and just start a, a presentation and dialogue here with our board.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Sandra, for extending the invitation. Thank you so much, Superintendent Lennox, and members of the Moundsview School Board. It is a great honor and privilege to be here. As I, I'm just kind of the warm-up act tonight. I'm going to provide, provide a kind of a big picture overview of intermediate 916 and a little bit about intermediates in general, and then I have some content experts as it relates to our programs and services, and they also have, I know Jill has some special guests that she wants to introduce that are Moundsview students. So with that, if I have your permission to begin.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're here on behalf of 916. I'm Superintendent Val Ray Bowe. I've got Jill Stewart Keller, our Director of Career and Tech, and Carnival Principal Jasmine Smith. So broad, broad perspective on intermediate school districts, there's four in the metro. We serve over 20,000 students collectively each year, and the intermediates, we have a specialty in providing services that are sometimes too costly for member districts to provide on their own, and we also have a specialty in providing a range of services that are really specialties, to provide services and programming to the students that maybe need something more than, than you're able to offer them in your districts. So our member, our membership is 13 members collectively, and Moundsview happens to be one of the founding members back in 1969, so one of the forward-thinking six districts that collectively determined that we could probably do some good things if we gather together our resources, and today, we serve those 13 members, and we are an extension of our 13-member districts. And as you can see, some of the other founding members are there in green. You have Mata Mida, North St. Paul, Roseville, Stillwater, and White Bear Lake. So 916 collectively in the 2021 school year served over 5,000 students across a variety of programs. The largest number of students are served in our area learning centers, which is around 18, a little over 1,800. Career and Tech, we have almost 1,000 students that we served in the 2021 school year. And then in special ed, our setting for programs, 671. We also have care and treatment programs, including two care and treatment programs that are, the Eris provides the therapeutic component, and 916 provides the educational component, and then we also have Willow's, the residential treatment program for young women, and 916 provides the current, or the educational component for that program as well. And then we also are proud to provide in-home district services to all of our members through contracted services. So we provide So we provide services to your students in your programs by providing you deaf, hard-of-hearing teachers, blind, visually impaired teachers. So some of those real low-incidence populations where we can provide the FTE based on the need in the IEP to your students in your schools. So I'll talk a little bit more about special education services. So 916, like the other intermediates, provides services to the top 1% of students with the greatest need across the metro. And we do that in special education in a number of ways, four ways in particular with 916, through our Setting Four programs, through contracted services to member districts, as I mentioned. Also, our care and treatment programs. Many of our students in care and treatment are on IEPs and require special services. And then also, some of our students in our area learning centers. We also have some unique services that we provide to our member districts, like Project Return, which is a 45-day placement. It's an alternative to suspension or expulsion. We also have an assessment center program, which is really valuable to our members when you have students that move in from out of country or new to country, also students that move across state that may need an additional comprehensive evaluation. Sometimes it's mental health evaluation, sometimes it's educational evaluation. Those are really very valuable to our member districts because it provides an extension of services that are maybe not something that would be able to be provided in our member districts. Some of them have, some member districts do have similar services, but not all. We also have a very special team of educational providers that we refer to as the consultation team. Their purpose is to prevent referrals to 916. They can be contracted to our member districts. They can be contracted on an individual basis. If there's a student that needs some special, you've done everything to exhaust all of your possibilities with the student. Our consultation team can come in and take a broader look at what's going on, either at an individual level, we can look at the classroom level, or an entire program. So that is one of our really highly-valued teams of experts that comes out to our member districts to provide services. I want to talk a little bit more about our contracted services. This is a really valuable asset to our member districts. So by providing this cadre of specialists, these highly-trained specialists to come out to your school district and our member districts, they can come to you based on the FTE that you need. And so there's a cost savings, a significant cost savings to our member districts by just contracting for that small FTE that's needed. And I'll provide you with an example of that in a little bit. But collectively, across our member districts, we provided last year in the 2021 school year 94, over 94 FTE equivalents to all of our member districts. And that's the highest area of those FTEs where our low-incidence teacher populations, like our blind, visually impaired, hard-of-hearing teachers, also our interveners and interpreters. So those are highly-trained specialists that we keep up with their certification and training to be able to provide to you in your districts. Here is a look at the Moundsview enrollment for the 2122 school year. And this is a snapshot from our dashboard. This is a dashboard that I put together for superintendents across our member districts this year. So they would have a live look at enrollment. Now, this is cumulative enrollment, which means students that have received services at some point throughout the school year, not necessarily enrolled at this time, but cumulatively, because we do have a lot of in and out, especially in our Setting Four programs. So you can see the contracted services down below. You'll see the BVI, or blind visually impaired teachers. You're currently contracting for about .95 of an FTE. The physical therapist, .3, and speech-language pathologist, .2. So the total enrollment, you've got a little color graph up above, but percentage of enrollment, of participation in our programs, you've got 53% of participation in Career and Tech, 38 or almost 39% in Setting Four Special Education, 5.4 in our area learning centers, and 2.7 in Care and Treatment. So that's a snapshot of the live data. This was taken late last week. So some of the other things that we're able to provide at a cost savings to all of our members collectively are some professional services, like laser fiche documenting, document imaging, for instance, also joint purchasing contracts. So a lot of our member districts and districts from across the state take advantage of the joint purchasing contracts. And that could be anything from classroom equipment to cleaning supplies. We also provide a large range of professional development opportunities to our member districts, special education training, technology training, also mental health training, including suicide and chemical health training. And there's a large number of opportunities that are coming forward here in the next couple of years, because we were just awarded the Project Aware Grant, which is 2.2 million. A lot of that grant will go to support our member districts in those trainings, especially in the area of mental health. So we're really looking forward to sharing that with you all. So one of the things that really helps us to continuously improve is our advisory groups. And so we have about six advisory groups that meet quite regularly. Some meet monthly, some meet quarterly, some meet five times a year. The superintendent's group meets five times a year. We share ideas, we talk about the common interests. We talk about some of the things that we are looking forward to in the future around maybe some projections. I am really looking forward to designing our annual JPA review. You may recall that there is a new JPA after 50-some years. We modernized it. And so as part of that annual JPA review process, we'll be looking at the JPA or looking at our partnerships annually. And that process is being designed right now. We're looking at both qualitative and quantitative data to determine long-term projections, taking a look at the last 10 years to see how far we've come and what's been accomplished over those years, some of the trends, and taking a look at maybe some of the projections and shared opportunities for the future. Really looking forward to having that conversation with the superintendents in May and then designing a continuous improvement process for us going forward. So the advisories will all be getting a survey coming up in the next couple of weeks and providing some input. That'll be part of the qualitative data that we look at. And then the quantitative data is being put together by our data analyst right now. She's pulling up the last 10 years of information that we'll be able to reflect on when we meet in May. And at this time, I am really excited to turn it over to our Director at the Career and Tech, Jill Stewart Keller.
Thank you. I'm going to ask us to slide this way, because I'm going to need to add a couple chairs in a moment. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm very proud to be a part of your educational system and help develop and continue the pathways to possibilities that Moundsview Schools has determined for students as it relates to career and technical education. So the 916 Career and Tech Center, my role as Assistant Director of Career and Technical Education, I have the opportunity to partner with all of the member districts and then your initiatives to help support students prepare for post-secondary success. So I'm seeing my friend Darren Johnson back there. We've got Michael Werner that represents both of the high schools. And then I work really closely with Mindy Hamburg as well to help extend your initiatives and your work toward helping students find their passion for post-secondary. At the 916 Career and Tech Center, our number-one goal is that 100% of our students feel confident about their next step, whatever that may be. And we celebrate all of those. So my big picture is looking towards partnering with your Career Pathways work and supporting that, as well as the other part of my work that I get to highlight today includes your students that are enrolled at the 916 Career Tech Center. So I'm going to shift from the Career Pathways piece and that support and those partnerships to the Career Tech Center. We're going to go back one more. Thank you. So the Career Tech Center, located at Century College. I actually say this, we actually do Career and Tech pep fest. I say 916, you say Career Tech. And so 300 students will be sitting in front of me, and I say 916, they say Career Tech, and I say, "Located at Century College." Because we are located at Century College, but sometimes students will call the college and ask for a transcript or want to get ahold of their educator or whatever it might be. But we're located on the property of Century College. We have very strong partnerships, but we're 916 proud. And so we're actually a separate entity, "Located at Century College." And we serve students in grades 10, 12, and through transition and graduation, whatever age that might be. We offer both year-long and semester or trimester-based courses that fit within a student's regular school day. So your students actually attend their regular school day from the time they arrive to school until approximately noonish. And then they get on transportation from Irondale and Moundsview High Schools and then come to campus along with students from the 13 other districts and attend one of the 20 programs that have been developed to both fit in the gaps, so complement your career pathways, as well as capstone. So for programs where students have exhausted all of the opportunities to take coursework at your schools, then we capstone that with an even higher level of opportunity for industry certifications and college credits. Students can earn up to 13 college credits in one school year. You can imagine those that repeat from junior to senior year. It can be pretty both lucrative in their pocket as well as towards graduation. And the one thing that I always love to bring back to our boards is the students are your students. They're 100% on your rosters, unlike PSEO where students are removed and the money goes elsewhere. 916 does not exist in the MDE system when it comes to career and technical education revenue. So 35% of our staff's salaries and our consumables that comes from that CTE revenue is actually brought back to our member districts. So we don't see, it all comes back to you as kind of that feedback and that reward for engaging and opening opportunities for your students to do career and technical education. So 20 programs, we also do the tier, I say competitive, you say advantage, competitive advantage, because we are proud of the fact that our students earn the competitive advantage of industry certifications, college credit, professional skills, and then also developing that professional network, as well as a portfolio for post-secondary success. One of the things, again, pulling students from all these districts, we have the space to offer very highly-specialized equipment, licensed educators, which is not easy to come by, with really unique lived experiences in the field, and support them to become CTE-licensed so they qualify for that CTE revenue. We offer over $38,000 in scholarships exclusive from the 916 Foundation. And then again, I mentioned the rest. The number-one thing is just making sure everyone's confident about what they want to do afterwards. I'm just smiling because I'm pointing to these two out here. We live and die by these career trees. So we worked with the specialists to develop not only our course descriptions, our course descriptions are bullets. The first bullet is the most exciting and engaging thing you'll do in that field or in that class. If that doesn't excite you, don't take the class. Don't try to do a job in that field. And there's 20 different programs. So it's almost like a career exploration exercise when students engage with our course descriptions. But in every one of our rooms, larger than the size of this monitor, is a, I would say more of that size, yes, is a poster of this. And we start from day one, talking about what is that, what are they passionate about, both work and what kind of lifestyle do they want to live? And we talk about work as a way to unlock the lifestyle you want someday. And the very bottom of the career tree, you'll notice entry-level careers. Those are all careers that want students finish just with our one-year program that are unlocked because they took the one-year program. They can go straight to work, whether it's full-time or part-time, after they graduate, in careers such as this. And then at the second level, you'll see technical careers. Those are careers that then are unlocked with more education or experience. Same thing at professional level. What's really interesting is the ones at professional level don't always make more money than the ones at the technical or entry level. But it's the idea that this is a pathway or a journey and not just a, "I'm going to aim at the thing, and I'm going to go for that thing." It's the idea that this is part of the journey. And you may find on your way to becoming a doctor that there's something at the technical level that, you know, lights you up and helps you live the lifestyle you want. And so it kind of, I think it's really quite interesting. Our EMT career tree has 12 careers at each level. So it's actually 36 careers, even though they're taking the EMT class and it's going to lead to EMT certification. What types of careers beyond just those doctor, lawyer, teacher, those types of things that they might want to head out? So that those career trees are something we're super excited about. And by the way, are utilized with your career pathways as well. So this is when we get to do the fun part. So with your permission, I'm going to welcome two of your students up to the speaker space. I'm, I think we can just scooch.
Absolutely.
Please, welcome.
Scoot around.
Come on up. And so they have a little bit of some prompts to speak to, but I'm going to invite them to tell you who they are, where they attend school when they're not, because you are your home high school, what program they're in, and then, of course, anything else that they find to be interesting. I hear that they also want to know what your plans are after high school. So anything you miss, or if you have any questions, obviously, we'll be open to those once they're complete.
Thank you.
Pendu, would you like to go first?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. My name is Upendo Gimby. And I take a program called Intro to Medical Careers through 916 Career and Tech. And I thought this program was very interesting because it allowed me to like enter the medical field, which I've always wanted. And it allowed me to explore more options. And everything about the program is very like hands-on. Like it's not just, when you go like in class, it's not just a lot of bookwork. It's just like you get to do a lot of skills and learn things that you wouldn't do in like a normal class in like high school. And that's what I really liked about it. And our instructor, Ms. Krenz, she's very good at like advising us and helping us explore more options. And also, another thing is we can get to earn certifications. And one of the certifications is PCA, that's a Personal Care Assistant, and also the CPR, which I've recently also found out that you could take $200 to take a class for that. So and I got it for free, so I'm really glad about that. And I can also learn about many more things about the medical field. And I'm planning to major in nursing in co-college in this fall, because I'm a senior. And yeah, that's, this really helped me take that step. And it is a very good program for me.
Where do you attend your night at?
Oh, yeah. I go to Moundsview High School.
Jacob, would you like to go next?
My name's Jacob. I go to Irondale High School. I'm a senior there. I'm enrolled, I take the automotive technology program at 916 Career and Tech. I found out about the program from my teacher at Irondale. I had taken his classes, great teacher, but I advanced out of it, taking him early. And so he sent me over here. And it definitely gives you a competitive advantage over everyone, other schools, because we, Irondale School has a good auto program, but it's a pretty small auto program. 916 has a very large auto shop. They've got a lot more facilities than Irondale does. They've got a lot more equipment. They've got, it's about three times the size as Irondale's garage is. And we're able to receive a lot of credits. The ASE certifications, I beg for automotive. That's what would get you the job. And then we've got two great instructors at 916, John Widhough and Mr. Jeff. They help you throughout the whole process. I was able to take the ASE classes on the board. And then I was, I'd taken those past him, and then I was able to ask him. And he, they both, John Widhough has been, was a certified tech before he was a teacher. And so he was able to help me with these journeyman tests, which are a little harder outside of school, and help me with the process. I had to apply for a work time-period permission slip, I guess. And they helped me through that and apply for scholarships. It helped me this year at Irondale with, I competed for the first time with another student. Irondale went down to Illinois to, for Universal Technical Institute, is an automotive school. And they have host every year a Top Tech Challenge, which is an automotive competition. For the first year, Irondale competed at that. We had one team, me and another student, and we placed fourth overall with 20 teams. And probably, I would not have been able to do that without 916 because there's a lot of equipment that we learned from 916 that we do not have at Irondale. And I'll be attending Universal Technical Institute next year.
And don't hurt yourself. It's not just a automotive school, it is a B automotive. Do you have any questions for the students during this time? I figure I can get them out of the hot seat, but after any questions.
I would just love, Jacob, I heard your presentation at the 916 Board a month ago. And I know I came back here and bragged to my board colleagues about that. It's just, it's just so exciting to see the opportunities. You know, we talk as a school board about, you know, college, post-secondary, getting ready for careers, and finding things that people are passionate about. And I just am so excited to hear about the partnership that 916 provides for our students, really to launch you into really great careers in both really high-demand industries that you both find rewarding. So I just am excited about it, and thank you so much for coming tonight to share with this board.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you for coming. I do have to note that my brother took this program. He graduated from Moundsview, and then he got a technical degree. And now he owns a small business here in the area and has been very successful. So thank you for having that program. It has affected our family in a very positive way. And we need you folks out there in the work environment. And you guys have taken just great first steps, so congratulations.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, I'm the last one to go. And now obviously we need a Carner Blue cheer, Carner, you say blue, you know, yeah, so anyway. Just talking a little bit about our special ed Fed Four programming, I'm specifically talking about our kindergarten to eighth grade programming. I'm the proud principal of Carner Blue. We serve approximately 120 scholars and currently 21 of your students. I believe the 22nd student was the one who was polar plunging just the other day because he recently graduated from us. So one of the things that we really value at Carner Blue is our teacher-child interaction training. It's just a way to speak to students. It's really important training that we all follow that allows our students to feel like we are actively listening to them, and it also is something that is not just a training that is done to staff and then they go about their business. We actually have a year-long coaching cycle that follows you around, where coaches are in the classroom, in teachers' ears, telling teachers and educational assistants what to say in alignment with this model. The second thing that we have that's unique to Carner Blue is our mental health classrooms. And so for people who are familiar with special ed, we do have a lot of students who need their mental health needs met as well as their disability. And a lot of times, the externalizing behaviors that our students have in those residential treatment or day treatment programs, unfortunately, they get kicked out of them often, and they come back to us at either the Fed III or the Fed IV level of special ed without really getting that treatment sought because of their physically aggressive behaviors. These two classrooms actually allow the opportunity for students to have three hours of therapeutic services during their day, as well as that academic school need met. So in our classrooms, we have a special education teacher, a therapist, a skills worker, and two educational assistants. That allows us to have fourteen spots for our students, and you actually at Mounds View have taken advantage of that opportunity at Carner Blue. And we've had a ton of success, I'll tell you a little bit more at the end.
And I did tour Carner Blue a couple of weeks ago and got to tour the mental health classrooms as well and met a couple of the Mounds View students.
Right, one was one of our tour guides.
Yes, yes.
I think a couple, actually. You have great leadership here at Mounds View. So one of the other things that's really important about Carner Blue is that we're a nature-based school. So something that we have is we have our own school forest, and we're actually working right now with the University of Minnesota to build like our outdoor classroom to make it like untouchable. Right now, it's kind of like the bridges are, like the woods are clear, there's a space, we can call it a, that nature-based curriculum towards wellness, being an explorer, expressions as much like an art or music class and a voyager class to make sure that our students have that connection to nature, which sometimes they don't have the opportunity to do in the metro area. The other important thing obviously is teaching the students. Academics and rigor is still important, no matter what is going on in your life. And so some of the things that we focus on is having a calm classroom, which is just a model of taking moments during the day to be mindful. Bridges is a curriculum we follow in the morning to give kids a really good number sense. We value having literacy two hours a day for all of our students. We know how important our literacy data is and what literacy data says about student outcomes after graduation, if they make it to graduation. Another thing that we focus on is obviously math, but our transformative and restorative learning is kind of a mix of SEL with like our equity work. So we really try to focus each month on celebrating something other than the typical white Christian holiday to make sure that all students feel present and celebrated in their community and the importance of seeing that in their classrooms, so that they feel like they are a part of our school. We're also currently in the process of piloting the STAR curriculum. It's a curriculum that was built for our students with autism. We really believe that this is the model we want to go to on the side of our building where our students aren't narrow typical. It allows them to have kind of a guided learning experience throughout their day that is paced at the time in which they can learn. Certainly self-regulation is something we focus on, but that sit-and-get type of learning is not something that works at Carner Blue. We also partner with our community partnerships to bring music therapy into the building, our canine-inspired change to bring dog therapy into our building, and we do have students also attending at our Cora site with the Urban Boat Builders. Lastly, I just want to share the end of a student story that's here, one of your students from Mounds View. So this student was not doing so well when they first came to us, just not being successful in the classroom, not having much success outside of the classroom. He was even in our Fed IV classrooms, needing to transition to those mental health rooms, and I'm proud to say that this is probably going to be his last year with us. I think one of the most important things that we do is make sure that we return your students back to you. So here's just a little word from his teacher that's been working with him this year. "The student and I's relationship started during Welcome Back Week of the 2021 school year. Staff were preparing to start the school year in distance learning. He was attending a therapy session virtually when I was able to join and introduce myself. I know he had been through some of the worst kind of trauma that someone can experience, yet he chooses to persevere through them and strives to be a better person. He's highly intelligent and an excellent student. Furthermore, he is respectful and kind. He has literally shown up to school starving, yet will offer his lunch to another student who says they're hungry. Since I met him, the day the student, since I met him that day during Welcome Back Week, he continues to make intentional decisions to improve who he is as a person. He still has a long way to go, but his success is thanks to the investment that he put into himself. I like to think my classroom had a little to do with that. And the student will be starting back with you May 1st, full-time back at Mounds View." And that is always our hope for all of our students, so thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation, and we would be happy to take any questions if you have them.
No questions, I do have a comment. I've worked with Jasmine for many, many years, so I can confidently say that our kids at Carner Blue are in very good hands, so thank you.
And my assistant principal, shout out.
Any other questions? This was fabulous, long overdue. Thank you Sandra for the idea and the invitation. Thank you all for making time tonight. You're doing incredible work, and we are also grateful for the partnership.
Thank you for that opportunity.
And superintendent, I kind of hijacked the agenda item, did you want to say anything?
Well, you know what, I would thank, I'm used to that. The, no, I, thank you Val, thank you, your team, students, everybody that's visited with us. You know, Val, you mentioned earlier, but it was almost in passing, fifty years ago, right, more than fifty years ago.
Yes, 1969.
This is a program that is part of who we are. It is a valued partnership, and the opportunities that it's provided, not only to the students that were with us today, but over those years, has been just absolutely incredible. So, thank you to all of you who are behind the scenes, working with us, not seen every day, not necessarily known to all of our families in our community, but you are an incredibly valuable and important partner in the work we do, supporting our students in this school district. So, thank you, not just for being here tonight, but for everything you do, it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We love our jobs.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Move to number 6.2 Updates, we'll start with AMSD and Legislative.
All right, we, Chris and I recently attended an AMSD meeting. It was, the highlight is the legislature's on break, but they unveiled some new education bills at the legislature, giant omnibus funding bills for this and that, and the Democrats in the House came by with a 1.1 billion increase in education spending, the Republican Senate came with 31 million, and so I didn't make the math team at Mounds View, but they're about a billion dollars apart. And so we did have an excellent presentation by Representative Wolgamatt on the special ed cross-funding, which is very important to our district, and the efforts to get more money into funding special ed projects. We also had the opportunity to discuss with the Department of Education some of their goals for early childhood, literacy by three, some teacher training, that type of thing. So, that's what was going on with AMSD, the legislature's scheduled to be until May 23rd. They are very, very, very far apart, that's all I can tell you, but certain things later in the session magically happen, so, but they do remain very far apart.
Over, under, ending on time?
I think they'll go home on time.
Great, thank you for that update. I'm programmed to ask for a 916 update, any cleanup that you wanted to do after the presentation? It was great.
No, maybe just reiterate, I said it before, but I did have a chance to do, go on a tour at Carner Blue a couple of weeks ago along with Senator Kunisch, and just, you know, I walked away with just an immense appreciation for the importance of that partnership that we have with 916, how 916 truly serves students that we just, we don't have the capacity to serve, we don't have the resources. And the staff at 916, the way they're trained, and just the really positive interactions with the students, it was just really heartwarming, and also just, you know, it's really great resource for us, and I look forward to my time on the 916 Board and learning more about it and ensuring that, you know, it's meeting all of our needs as a school district as well. So, that's it.
We appreciate your representation.
Two school boards.
When Mary Jo announced her retirement, there was a scrum. Sandra came out victorious, so she is representing us and giving us great updates at our board meetings. I will move us to item 7.1, School Board Member Reports. Does anybody have anything to share?
I do. I was lucky enough to participate in BizTown at Sunnyside Elementary the week after spring break, and BizTown is where fifth graders come and apply for jobs in their business world. And so I interviewed about twenty or twenty-five fifth graders over the course of the day. I had to try really hard to keep some of my giggles in, to be honest with you. Their resumes were exceptional, they listed line leader, you know, bus patrol, all these wonderful things, and I was texting to my young adult kids saying, "Do you have this on your resume?" Because you also were a line leader at Sunnyside. But the teachers there did a fabulous job of preparing these students. I was unbelie, they just, very few of them were nervous at all, and they came in applying for jobs like beverage manager because they really like drinks, so they thought they would be a good beverage manager. They had, it was just a really fun day, so I commend the fifth grade teachers for all their work to prepare them, and like I said, it was fun to be in the building for the day and get to interact with a bunch of them.
To piggyback off that, I got to be at BizTown yesterday, so all those young CEOs you hired, I got to work with them yesterday. My son was probably one of the ones, he applied for the cafe because he likes food.
I mean, their reasons and resumes were just amazing.
Was sorely disappointed when he became the CEO of Mortenson Construction, so. It was just a super fun day with the fifth graders at BizTown. It just, I worked in the philanthropy group, we were raising money for a dog rescue. It was, it was just really fun, they did a great job, it was fun.
Any other board member reports?
You know, I guess I would just like to, you know, it's the end of the school year coming up, and we've got AP tests and kids making big decisions about their next step in life as they close out their high school career. And I just want to just, you know, we've had some, a lot of focus on mental health in our district. It was about five years ago this week where we kind of embarked on this journey and really focusing as a school board on student mental health, and I just want to just call that out and just appreciate the journey we've had.
Great.
I stopped by the Community Ed Event a few weeks ago at Turtle Lake, it was just great, it was fun to see everybody from youth sports to summer band to all sorts of different activities. There was just tons of kids there, there were tons of helpers, high school students from Mounds View and Irondale there, it was great to see the kids out and about, and great to see we have 2,000 registrants. I of course scored some nice free pencils, Post-Its, got myself an Irondale foam football, Mounds View foam football, it was really fun. So, I did manage to catch in the one nice day of spring this year, yesterday, Mounds View played some baseball, it was nice to be outside and watch the kids out there playing. And I attended a Valentine Hills PTO meeting and they had a really wonderful book fair. Just to note that it's just so great to go to stuff that where things are feeling quite normal, so bravo to the return to normalcy, so, thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned spring, I would just wrap us off with a regular reminder that our kids are jumping off the bus and not running into the house to play video games, but running out into the streets, so pay attention as you're driving around. Our young people are gonna be hopefully very active and enjoying a great spring and heading into summer. With that, we were scheduled to go into a closed session, we were able to accomplish that in advance of the meeting due to know people at the listening session, so is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.